Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodson.
Here.
Okerberg.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Coons.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the collective allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight for this meeting, and with that, we will look for the first item is to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve the agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. We will now move down to public hearing 131. Consider modification to Development District number three and Tiff District number three dash ten, and we'll go to Troy.
Good evening. We've been working with Pro Pet about a potential expansion project of their facility on the industrial park. They are looking at a two-phase expansion project of about 30,000 square feet that would result in about 10 additional jobs. Tonight, we have the public hearing for utilizing tax increment financing for this project with a resolution to follow. We have Ed Sheeta with Advanced Resources, our consultant that works with us on these Tiff projects, and also Tim Bush, the general manager at Pro Pet, if you have any additional questions. So I'll turn it over to Ed.
Thank you. Good evening. As Troy introduced it, it covers quite a bit of it. This is a proposal, again, for tax increment financing, for an economic development tax increment financing district where you're being asked to approve pay-as-you-go tax increment financing that would reimburse the company for eligible site improvement costs. As Troy said, their proposal would be to do an approximate 30,000-square-foot expansion, a couple thousand square feet of office space. In visiting with the county assessor, he provided us some estimates with regard to the future value of the building and the property, and it's anticipated that this will generate about $504,000 of tax increment. The general formula we use is that 95% goes back to the company. It can be a little higher. It depends on some of the administrative costs, so they would get back about $480,000. Over a period of nine years, construction is scheduled for 2016. We will follow this up with implementation via a pay-as-you-go development agreement, and that basically what that says is that if they build it and they continue to operate in it and give us some evidence that they incurred their site costs, the city will reimburse them over the time period of the increment or as long as they continue to operate there. Whichever is the greater.
Okay.
Is there any questions, Joe?
Any questions from Ed? With that, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing at 7:05 for anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of this. Is there anyone that wishes to? See none. We'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Some of them.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to close the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now it's the council's turn to ask any questions, if you have any. With that, what is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve 131 dash one, the resolution 5216. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. The motion was by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion at this point? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Thank you. Moving on to the next one is a consider issue of tax exempt bonds for Nest Healthcare, and with that, we'll go back to Troy.
Actually, that is...
Mine, yes.
I'll help you out on that one.
That's yours, okay.
Yes, as you know, we've been asked by Nest Healthcare. It's an Illinois not-for-profit corporation that the city grant host approval for the issuance of revenue bonds. A portion of the proceeds of those bonds will be used to fund the acquisition of a local facility here, Valley View of Owatonna. The host approval is required by both state and federal law. This has no impact on... They are not an obligation to the city. It has no impact on us financially. I believe we have some representatives here, either from Valley View or Nest, to speak to any questions that you may have, so...
Okay, thank you. And with that, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Please come forward.
Mayor Coons and council members, my name is Tony Shear. I'm from Nest Healthcare, and we're a non-for-profit dedicated to seniors, to the needs of the seniors and the mentally ill, and we're really excited to be part of your community, and we intend to keep things as is and improve the property by putting about $700,000 of construction into the facility. And we just feel like it's a great place, and we cater to a population that really needs this sort of service, and we look forward to being part of the community.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, at 7:08, I will open up the public hearing, and if anybody in the audience wishes to speak on this, again, please come forward. See none. We'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Some of them.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to close the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now it's the council's turn to ask any questions. Do you have any? I will look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve resolution 5316. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved also. Thank you, and good luck with that. Now we will move on to item 1.4, which is the 2016 legislative wrap-up, and we have Senator Vicki Jensen here.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me some time on the agenda. I'm happy to be back here and try to give an update on what's happening with the legislative session. Hopefully, we're going to go back and have a special session and take up the tax bill that was pocket-vetoed and the bonding bill. The discussion that they had today, my understanding is that they have set up a time to discuss the leadership and the governor next week to talk some more about what we're going to do, and it sounds like they might be talking about holding a conference committee on the bonding bill itself and allow the governor's proposals to be heard in a public hearing. I think that's great news because that sounds like people are open to the idea. What his proposal was today, the governor said, "I would like to meet you halfway on this bonding bill." That leaves about $100 million. That would meet right in the middle between the $800 million in the House proposal and the 1.2 sum that originally was talked about by adding the governor's full proposal. The ones that I'm interested in, that I think you should be aware of, that he's talking about adding, is the operating support for the Minskew State Colleges and Universities, which includes the South Central College, work that needs to be done in North Mankato. I've seen that building, that the work that they need to do really, really has to happen, those cracks in the one part of the wall. We need to make sure we take care of that particular issue. The Minnesota Investment Fund and Job Creation Fund is about $20 million. I think that's very valuable, important, especially in rural areas, to make sure we keep that economic development going. I hope they include that. Some of the other things that are a little bit more, but the St. Peter's Security Hospital is pretty serious, and we have to make sure that if we have staff and we hire staff and there are problems with safety, that we at least figure out how we're going to keep them safe there. That's one. Also, some more Minskew Heaper things that are on there. But I think we can come to a conclusion, at least with the $100 million, add some of the governor's proposals, and go off of what we originally passed in both the House and the Senate on the last night of session. Unfortunately, there was an amendment that was made in the Senate that had to do with $300 million of one-time surplus money put towards transportation projects because we weren't able to complete a transportation package, a comprehensive package, that we could not come to an agreement on, and we've been working on this in conference committee for two years. I serve on that conference committee. I can tell you, the Senate proposal started with wholesale gas tax. We dropped down to a straight gas tax. We dropped from 16 cents to 12 cents, and then by the end, we didn't do gas tax at all. From the House proposal, really what happened, and you need to understand this, the chair of the Transportation Committee was not given the authority or the targets that he needed to negotiate with the Senate on that bill. And what I heard this morning in a meeting with the chamber is they were not going to take any consideration on a gas tax at all and not use that in any way, so that was just off the table. So obviously, that's why we were not able to come to a conclusion. So, the one-time surplus money is not an answer to our transportation problems. It's not going to fix what we really need, but it did have some really good things in it, including some cash money for Highway 14. We were able to get some cash for land acquisition last time. We really need to keep going on that so that when we do get the appropriation for the construction, we're ready to do that and move forward with Highway 14. But I do have some concerns. If we're going to use bonding in this manner for our transportation system, it will look like it looked this year, where people fight for their particular project, and we end up in gridlock and nothing really can move forward. So I have some concerns about that. I hope we're able to figure out going forward and in the future. It's not going to happen this year, but in the future, I hope that we can come to some kind of conclusion and bring everybody to the table and really have a good negotiation or at least a good discussion on how we want our transportation funding to look like in Minnesota. We were able to pass a supplemental finance bill, and the tax bill was actually a great example of how when chairs are given the power to negotiate and work things out, they came out with a pretty good package. It included some money for LGA. It included some tax cuts for working families. It had a bill that I authored on some tax credit refunds to students that have 10% of their adjusted gross income payment. Towards their college debt, they could get the $1,000 refundable tax credit. And it also included some help and some relief for the agriculture classification and tax when it comes to school bond referendum, and we know how difficult that is and what an impact that is to our communities when one tax classification gets hit harder than others. There was relief for that in this tax bill as well. It was also an example of how everybody ends up getting something that they wanted. Automatic inflation on cigarettes came off. That was a proposal from the House. A lot of people that I know are upset about that, but that's what happens when you get to the table and you really negotiate with each other. You're going to get something, and you have to give something, and that's really what happened in that tax bill. So I'm really excited. I hope we get back and we can sign that bill because there's a lot of people that would be affected and helped and have their property taxed reduced. The one tax credit that's in there is actually very, very unique. It's a progressive tax cut, so the first $100,000 of your commercial business is exempted from the state general levy tax. So if you're a smaller business and you don't have as high a property tax, it's going to be a better impact to you, but every business gets it. So I am hoping, like I said, it's a great provision, one that they worked together on, that will be very helpful to people. So that's what I know right now as far as special session. I think it's moving forward. Yesterday, I would have felt differently, but now that we have the veto of the tax bill, it was stated there was an error in there, and there was some concern, and the concern that I heard was if this would have been a benefit to the taxpayer to change it through a letter, would have been probably a lot easier than when you go the opposite way, that you almost needed the legislative action if it's going to be a negative impact to taxpayers, just that MMV felt more comfortable with it that way. So, a lot of other really good things happened, I thought, during session. I was able to, like I said, I worked on insurance issues. Our life insurance companies are very happy now. They can use new mortality tables. We were the only state in the nation left that weren't going to be able to do that, and they're able to do that now, and some other things. But I'd be happy to answer some questions. I hope we get some bonding to help the local communities with wastewater and get some grant money to help if they're trying to upgrade any of those systems, their water or their wastewater, which is part of the governor's plan, too. Does anyone have any questions about anything?
Any questions?
I know some of the deed programs and stuff. The funding wasn't there for them yet. I hope that they will have some additional funds.
For which one?
Business infrastructure.
The Job Creation Fund and the Minnesota Investment Fund.
Yeah, that's the one that's in the governor's proposal to be added in when we go back. So that would be, I think it was 20 million that they're talking about adding. So I hope we're able to do that, and we'll know if they hold an open conference committee on the governor's proposals and they include that, there's a possibility that it could get in still.
Yeah, we've utilized both those programs quite a bit in the last three, four, or five years and have helped a number of expansion projects, and we're talking to a few businesses about future expansions now and do not have that on the table right now. I talked to our deed representative this morning, too, and he kind of let me know what was going on, and, you know, basically, we can't even put that in the picture when we're talking with them anymore, so...
So I'm hoping that gets included.
That business, BDPI as well?
Well, the BDPI was included in the financial supplemental package. That's a bill that I've carried several years. We were able to get $15 million in that.
Okay.
You made reference to property tax relief for businesses, and was there something in there that you made mention of with regard to homeowners or other property tax relief? Or is there anything in particular with regard to that?
The one in particular is the debt equalization and the changes that they were able to do for egg classification when there's a school bonding referendum.
That's the big one.
That's the big one.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the update.
And hopefully, we'll have the special session, and we will come to a conclusion on that, and I'd be happy to answer questions once we do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to the next item, which is a financial report, and I'll ask councilmember Schultz to give us a report.
Okay, recap of the expenditures presented tonight are as follows. Checks over $20,000 are $345,868 to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust for the annual property and liability premium. $21,503 to Owatonna Heating and Cooling for the Arts Center project. $31,027 to Reinders for golf course pesticides and herbicides. $46,000 to Rocon for the Arts Center project. $36,386 to Suburban Elevator for the Arts Center project. $261,804 to Wentzal Construction for 2016 street projects. $20,000 to Ruth and Jerry Williams, which is an EDA loan for the Completely Kids Building. Other expenditures of $305,637 make a subtotal of $1,068,226. Add to that HRA Section 8 payments of $67,008. Makes total expenditures presented for approval tonight of $1,135,234.96.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions from the council?
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion there? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The financial report has been accepted. Moving on to the consent agenda items, which are minutes of meetings, license and permit, requests, board and commission meeting minutes, et cetera, all grouped into one motion, and with that, we'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion on these? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. These have been all approved. Moving down to action items, 3.1.1, on-sale liquor license for Alex Medina doing business as Don Juan's Catina and Grill, and this we go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. We have received an application from Alex Medina. The restaurant is currently unoccupied at this time. The Minnesota Department of Health has completed their inspection, and we've also had Ken Beck review the location, and he has approved it for occupancy as well. Budget impact, our annual license fee for on-sale liquor is $3,200. That includes a Sunday sale, and so payment of this fee will be received upon approval. We have received the application fee, and this would be effective July 1 through June 30 of 2017. Staff would recommend approval of this license.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Good luck with that, and have fun out there. Moving on down to 3.1.2, tobacco license for Zeldon Asserbain to do business as Downtown Tobacco. Back to Chris.
You might remember this one. Last month, the council approved a new tobacco license for Mr. Benny Jardat at the same establishment. He has decided not to begin operations, but Mr. Abu Shabi will. So a background check has been completed, and Chief Hiller has no objection to the issuance of this tobacco license based on that investigation. It's an annual license. The budget impact, the fee is 150 per year. We've received our prorated payment for the remainder of this year, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Good luck with that. Moving on to tobacco license for Milt's Wreath Farm. Chris.
Here again, another license application. We have received all of the necessary paperwork, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Good luck with that. Moving down to ordinances, 3.2.1, proposed ordinance 516 for first reading of vacate easement at Bob and Donna Ears, and this we go to Troy.
Bob and Donna Ears is proposing to vacate a portion of utility easement located in Maple Creek Highlands, which is along Majestic Lane in the northeast part of town. There are currently no utilities within the easement. They are looking to combine some lots and put a house over multiple lots there, so the house would straddle over the existing utility easement. Future utility extensions would be able to be extended along the perimeter of the lot, which has utility easements. So we did have a public hearing. We didn't have anyone with any issues with that, and so Planning Commission recommended approval, and staff would recommend approval as per the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I'm sorry, this is ordinance. We have to go roll call.
It's a roll call, correct. Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Okerberg.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
And Abraham.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Okay, this has been approved for the first reading.
Correct.
I believe, yes. Okay, moving on to resolutions, 3.3.1, resolution 4916 to amend designated depositories, and this will go to Chris.
Thank you. This is just adding an additional local bank to our list of approved depositories for the city. We wish to add an additional bank to this, and there is no effect on our current operating budget, and we would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion there? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Moving on to 3.3.2, resolution 5016, preliminary and final plat approval for Helverson Phillips addition, and we're back to Troy.
This is a request by Gary Helverson and Carol Phillips, which they own property at 909 and 929 Middle Springs Road, to plat two existing lots into three. Currently, there's two houses on the property. The lot lines are being realigned to create more normal lots for the two existing houses, and then a new lot would be created in between. It would total 1.66 acres for the entire plat. Services would not need to be changed. In fact, there was a stubbin already extended for that potential vacant lot, and the applicant is proposing to dedicate a 10-foot utility easement along the entire perimeter of the plat. There is an existing shed that would stay on there. The intent is to have a billing permit for a new home on that center lot, as well as an additional accessory structure. So Planning Commission did have a public hearing on it and recommended approval with some conditions as listed in your staff report, and so staff would recommend approval as per the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve, subject to the conditions.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Okerberg, or Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. Moving on to 3.3.3, resolution 5116, finding of no significant impact for Virecon, and we'll go back to Troy.
Well, Virecon has been busy with new construction for a while now, and they actually have plans for future expansion as well. This is to allow for increased efficiency and expanded storage capacity for the architectural glass products that they produce. The square footage, the proposed additions totals 538,000 square feet with construction occurring over multiple phases over a four-year period. The state's Environmental Quality Board requires industrial projects over 450,000 square feet to have environmental assessment worksheet performed. ISG has prepared the EAW and are now in the final process of completing this process. The city as the responsible governmental unit for this request needs to adopt a resolution in finding of no significant impact or require further environmental study through the environmental impact statement. The required 30-day public comment period was held between April 18 through May 18. During this process, the Planning Commission also held a public hearing on April 26. The Planning Commission did not receive any comments on the EAW at their hearing, and overall, comments were received from state agencies. There was very minimal comments from those agencies, and all that information is in your packet there. This really has no impact to the city or the city budget. It's a process that we're responsible for making sure happens, and they've gone through the steps. So staff would recommend approval of the resolution, finding no significant impact for the Virecon environmental assessment worksheet.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
You won. Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved also. Moving down to 3.3.4, resolution 5416, elect to participate in Steel County EDA, and this we back to Troy.
So this has been discussed for some time at the county level to establish a county EDA, and most recently, a task force was set up to take a look at this, representatives from the different cities and townships and different organizations, the chamber. We had multiple meetings to review whether the county should establish a EDA, and the county has been supportive of economic development activities for the city, as well as other cities in the county. Felt like this would offer some additional benefits, some other resources and potential funding sources, and so through that process, the task force had recommended that the county go ahead and pursue a county EDA. The county did have a public hearing and adopted a resolution to establish the EDA. Now it's up to each of the cities and townships to pass a resolution to participate. of the cities and townships to pass a resolution to participate in the county EDA. So what we're proposing tonight is a resolution that the city elects to participate in the county EDA. This allows county resources and policies and everything to be incorporated with the city. Really, the intent of the county EDA is to help support existing EDAs within the county to further their economic development activities. And so there would have to be, you know, mission statement and bylaws and everything established once the city elects to participate in the county EDA. So tonight, we have a resolution requesting that the city participates in the county EDA, and staff would recommend approval of that resolution.
Thank you, Troy. Now, would this include appointing someone from the council to be on that committee, or is that preliminary or premature at this point?
Yeah, they will be establishing the makeup of that county EDA. There will be city representation on that. I don't know if that will be in the form of a council person. It might be in the form of an EDA member, but there will be some city representation on it. The bylaws have not quite been established yet to define that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, other questions from the council?
I would just like to know my involvement with the committee to establish or to discuss the formulation of an EDA. And that one discussion was to not duplicate services, but to, at the very least, be a resource and utilize what has already been established and create a new, the ability for some outliers to get information, maybe some resources that are existing or build upon some existing things, but to not duplicate services if they already exist.
And I think that's the intent of it, is not to duplicate the services.
That's correct. We had that discussion and wanted to make sure that, in all reality, there's smaller communities in the county that doesn't have the staff or the resources that Oatana has, probably would benefit more from the county EDA than we may. But there are definitely some benefits from the, that the city EDA could benefit from the county.
Any questions or comments? What is council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent Svenby to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Hoekeburg. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Proceed with it. Thank you, Troy. Moving down to Board and Commission recommendations, 3.4.1 V-1386, construct a garage onto front yard at 700 Oakwood Lane. And we're back to Troy again.
So this is a request by Kurt Langenberg at 700 Oakwood Lane. The ordinance does state that accessory structures shall be located within the rear or side yard. So the variance is really to put it in the front yard. They're proposing a 30 by 30 or 900-square-foot garage within the front yard. The homes that are located in that area on Oakwood all set, are set back, you know, around 100 feet from the street. They all back up to a ravine area that goes onto the brook tree, and they all have extremely large front yards. The proposed garage would have a setback of approximately 93 yards from the street, 80 feet from the front property line. The closest property line would be approximately 23 feet from the east side, and all setbacks would be met, other than it's, in fact, in the front yard. The proposed garage would be constructed to coordinate with the house. The garage would have similar siding and would be shingled with a 512 pitch roof. Garage doors would face the driveway and not the street. From the top of the hill, it falls down approximately 30 feet to the golf course. And the front yard is the only area on the lot that would work to construct the garage. And attaching it to the house would affect the hillside depending on the size. And in some of your diagrams there, you can see kind of the elevation and how it drops off, off that backside. So really, this becomes the only option, really, they have there. So we did have a public hearing at Planning Commission. Had some neighbors there just kind of curious as to what the request was for. Had one question as to what the garage would be used for. It would be used to store vehicles, personal vehicles. So Planning Commission did recommend approval, and staff would recommend approval of this variance request as well.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion by Nate and a second by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do you have any other questions?
Exactly.
See none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. I got some cars that I need to store, so.
I've got a couple also, so.
Okay. Moving down to 3.5.1, purchased property at 115 East Pearl. And we're back to Troy again.
Well, as downtown redevelopment is one of the city's, city council's priorities in our strategic plan, the EDA has been pursuing opportunities for redevelopment in and around the downtown area. So the second phase of Gateway and buying Baba's Bar for fixing that up are two examples of redevelopment projects that they have undertaken. We have started, somewhat started redevelopment on the 200 block, on the east side of the 200 block of Cedar with the State Theater property. I guess that's about five years now that we had that, got that donated to us, and we demolished the theater and have the intent of redeveloping that site. So this is an area that we have kind of looked at as having the potential for redevelopment. So staff has been looking at this area. One property that would help with redevelopment in this, in this area is 116 East Pearl Street. This property is a triplex. It is surrounded on three sides by commercial buildings. It is in a B3 central business district. The city does have a purchase agreement on the property contingent on EDA and city council approval. The purchase price is 125,000, which would be paid for by the EDA. The EDA did approve the purchase of the property at their meeting in May. So the triplex is a big house. It is built in 1890, and it sits next to Legacy Signs on Pearl. The former Bishman Insurance Office is across the street. We have the school district building on the backside across the alley. The plan would be to rent the triplex in the short term to recoup some of the costs of the purchase. The HRA has agreed to manage the house while keeping 10% of the rent collected for administrative fees. There are some improvements that would be needed to be done to the property, which includes putting a coat of paint on the house, repairing a few of the windows, and demolishing the accessory buildings on the back. And the one is really kind of tilted and really should come down immediately. The improvements would be equivalent to about six months of the rent collected from the property. And once a redevelopment project is put together, the triplex would be demolished and the property redeveloped. So the intention here really is demolish the property. And like we've done in the past, is we've rented it out in the short term to recoup some of our costs, just to lower our overall costs on the project. So all expenses would be covered by the EDA. Repairs and maintenance work would be, and upkeep of the triplex would be contracted out and paid for by the rent collected on the property. So staff would recommend approval of the purchase of the property at 116 East Pearl.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? See none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now, moving on to public comment, and if anyone in the audience wishes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, we will allow you two minutes to do that. Please step forward to the mic if you wish.
Okay, some weeks ago, I was at a stormwater study session, and I talked to a council member afterwards about piecewise implementation of some of the megabuck infrastructure improvements that need to be done. I mean, talking $3 million, that we better do piecewise because we can't, don't have all lots of cash laying around. And I shared with this council member that I was really impressed with the public input suggestion at the, at the study session, that we put a stormwater retention pond just east of the poking lot and drain the poking lot into it. Wouldn't take a lot of upfront money, and it'd be a piecewise improvement. Okay, the council member commented, "We don't have any money." Okay, let me pick that one apart here, because it's only part of a sentence that you'll sometimes hear from people. "I don't have any money," or "we don't have any money." I'm looking right above here. We have 31,027 dollars for golf course pesticides and herbicides. So that means we have money for killer chemicals, which I prefer to call pesticides and herbicides, but no money for stormwater system fixes. This is analogous to a homeowner having money to fertilize pesticide, herbicide, and even mow his lawn and maintain it with big bucks, with the huge riding lawnmowers and everything else, but no money to fix his leaky roof. I've been complaining about the city use of killer chemicals for years to no avail. The city still has no written chemical use policy. I welcome any suggestions as to tell why do I feel like I'm banging my head against the wall. Thank you much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? See none? We will move on to the council comment, and we'll start with Nate.
I would like to wish all the kids a good last day of school and enjoy the summer.
Thank you. Jeff?
Again, drive safely with the kids being out of school. They're going to be on bikes and probably lack helmets. Please wear your helmet. Also, it's going to be very warm this weekend. Probably a good idea to hydrate so we don't have more medicals than we already have. Have a good weekend.
Thank you. Great.
Jeff stole my thunder, so I concur.
Thank you. Dave?
Nothing more from Ward 3.
Kevin?
It's a great weekend to go to the water park.
There you go. Brent?
Just want to congratulate all the seniors graduating this year, and good luck in your futures, and drive safe the summer with the kids being out of school, so.
Thank you. Tom?
Nothing to add.
Chris?
Nothing from me.
Thank you. And from my standpoint, please drive carefully. Those kids are precious commodity, so. Thank you. And with that, look for a motion to adjourn.
Please, a motion to...
Go into a closed session.
Go into a closed session.
We got to go closed.
That's right. We go into the special session, don't we? So a motion to go into the special session.
Some of.
By Kevin Rainey, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We now go into the special session.